Evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are streaming the City of Madison Council Meeting live on City Madison YouTube Channel, as well as archiving it there. Today is Tuesday, September the 23rd. Like with all of our meetings, we'll begin by inviting everyone to stand and recite the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll get into tonight's business. Thank you.
Amen. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Clerk Treasurer is not here tonight. She is celebrating an important anniversary. So we want to wish her a happy anniversary. So I will do the roll call, calling a roll call. Tevin O.
Here.
Krebs.
Here.
Datillo.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Storm. I know Councilman Storm is out on active duty and is going to join us remotely if he can. Wilbur.
Here.
And Bartlett.
Here.
All in attendance. Counsel, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last council meeting dated September 2nd? If so, will entertain a motion to approve minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd.
A second.
Any discussion? Are you none in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do not have any presentations. I do want to welcome our guests here tonight. I see a couple of students from Madison, right? Anybody, any other students here, Southwestern or Shaw? Welcome here. You have picked a, an interesting meeting to join. You're going to see your local elected leaders in action, taking on an important public topic with the community. Before we get into introducing the ordinance, I would just like to make just a brief statement. We're not here tonight to make long speeches, myself. We're not making long presentations. We're here to listen to you, for counsel to be able to interact with you. Our zoning consultant, Amy Williams, Taylor-Cheever Williams, is also here to answer any questions counsel may have. I'll turn the floor over to Councilwoman Krebs here in just a little bit. But this process we're here tonight to discuss has really been ongoing since about 2021 post-COVID, with economic development strategies established by Governor Holcomb and the state legislature. Again, that was for Ready One investments, and you've seen those improvements happening all across our community. In 2023, the state legislature, on the heels of a very successful Ready One program, launched Ready 2.0. We've been working on that very concertedly since 2023. But the beginning of it all was comprehensive planning from our predecessors, as well as Destination Madison Plan that we enacted through the Ready Program, beginning in 2021. We have been having this public discussion about the riverfront zoning since May of this year. And it's been almost five months. And we're here tonight to go through the adoption of an ordinance and taking action on the Plan Commission recommendation. Those are my remarks, and again, I'm also here to answer questions of counsel. But tonight is to hear from you and share your thoughts with our counsel, who is working with me to deliberate this important matter. Joe, I will turn it over to you to introduce Ordinance 2025-16.
All right. This is the first reading of, first of two of the Ordinance 2025-16, Amendment to the Zoning Map and Schedule of District Regulations. Sponsored by Councilmen Wilbur and Datillo.
Right, councilperson. Right. So at this moment, I would ask counsel if they have some remarks they'd like to make ahead of the public discussion. And then Councilwoman Krebs is going to lead us into the rules for tonight's public discussion.
Does anybody else, does anybody have anything before we get started?
Do you want to comment first?
Yeah, well.
Do you want to talk about the fact there are two proposed amendments?
Yeah, I do. So tonight, before our meeting, two of our councilmen gave us some amendments regarding setbacks and different boundaries for the ordinance. And so we obviously have not had time. I don't have the brainpower to digest two different things, go through it while I'm listening to you and vote on it. So we're going to form a committee to go over these and give us time to digest them. So we're looking for an amendment, I wanted you guys to know, considering setbacks and boundaries. But it's a lot to go through in five minutes. And we have been busy responding and listening to various people in the community. And I'd like to take a second to say, when you come up, please don't accuse us of not listening, because we have. Okay, we're, I mean, I know personally, I'm getting four or five phone calls, eight or 10 emails, and four or five texts every single day. And I am trying to respond to all of them. And there are days that I have things going on, and like a 45th class reunion over the weekend, that I couldn't respond right away. So now I'm going back through the older messages. We are listening to what you say. Please understand that just because we might not agree with everything you say, does not mean that we're not listening. Some examples already regarding this specific ordinance was one of the first things we heard right away was it's way too tall. So we immediately took off an entire level and lowered it 10 feet. And then there were concerns about how big the area was. So we, within a couple of weeks, reduced the boundaries to about 2/3 of what was originally proposed. And then there was some incorrect stuff about the uses and sources. And so we got that changed, to assure you that no drugstores or anything like that would even be permitted, not even a possibility. And then tonight, we're starting to look at changing and adjusting the setbacks. So we are listening and we are making adjustments. So please keep that in mind. And please don't assume that you know what we're thinking or how we're going to vote. Because to be perfectly honest with you, there are some of us that still aren't sure how we're going to vote. So please, just don't be presumptuous. We are happy to listen, because you're right, that is our job. And we will be listening. But please also understand, this is not a question-and-answer session. We will not be going back and forth, trying to answer your questions. We're happy to do that through email, texting, or if you want to stay after, we can do that. But there is quite a long list, and we want to be able to get through all of them and give everybody a chance that wants to speak their opportunity to speak. So please don't come up here with a list of questions. Come up here with your feedback. We're happy to listen, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here and to give us the feedback. And please don't listen to the people that say we don't, because we do. Okay, those people do not know us. We do appreciate you, and we value your opinions. All right, so here's our list out. And if you're going to be rude and boo someone or shout out during their speech, we're going to ask you to leave. We're going to be respectful of everyone, no matter what side you're on. Everybody deserves to give their opinion. Please do not shout out, jump up, boo, poo, no noises. Just please be adults, be respectful, and we can agree to disagree on some things. And thank you very much for your cooperation with that. Okay, so I've got my list of those of you that signed up. Four minutes, and I'll have my clock on. And we're going to start with Kevin Kellums.
Sign sheet wasn't out there when I walked in?
We pick it up at 5:30 when the meeting starts.
It didn't start the meeting at 5:30.
Well, the.
I got here as quick as I could after.
Okay, Julie, okay. At the end, okay, and I understand. So at the end, I'll ask if there's anybody else that did not get signed up, and we're happy to listen to that. Okay, but we'll go in the order that I have so far.
Counsel, I am Kevin Kellums, and I want to share with you a personal statement I wrote to provide some key facts and history, particularly as it applies to the Ready Grant Process and the RDA. It is not from the RDA Board. It is one I wrote as this county's representative. And afterwards, I'm going to leave copies of it in the back of the room, in case there's anyone who wants a copy. I'm going to read straight from what I'm handing out. In 2015, the Indiana General Assembly enacted legislation permitting the formation of regional development authorities. The Our Southern Indiana Regional Development Authority includes Clark, Floyd, Jefferson, Scott, and Washington Counties. It is focused on capitalizing regionally significant development projects, and its purpose is twofold. Number one, to acquire, construct, equip, own, lease, and finance projects and facilities for the benefit of eligible political subdivisions, for example, cities, counties, and towns. And number two, to fund and develop projects, including those that are economic development projects, and any project that enhances the region with the goal of attracting people or attracting business. Ready 2.0 funds were appropriated by the Indiana General Assembly. For the record, no local tax dollars are awarded by the RDA. Also, unlike some regional development authorities, entities that are established as nonprofits, our RDA operates under Indiana's Open Door and Transparency Law. Now, here's how the grant process works. Regarding project applications, local governments, not-for-profits, and developers apply for grants to the RDA Board, which ranks them through a lengthy and detailed blind scoring process, and then forwards the rankings to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation for more in-depth analysis, including return on investment and key performance indicators, as well as final funding determinations. In scoring project applications from the five counties, all five board members use a detailed and publicly available scorecard derived from the state's priorities, including a high prioritization during Ready 2.0 for new housing. Regarding project scoring, it is the average from all five board members that determines a project's ranking. The Madison Cole property application was ranked 10th out of 74 projects from across the five counties. In Ready 2.0, the top 30 projects of those 74 were forwarded to the IDC for further consideration. Naturally, many projects evolve over time, as applicants refine their approach and as additional information becomes available to them. That is normal. It would be abnormal if projects remain static. In other words, were the same at the end as they were at the beginning of the process. It is also standard procedure that updates or addendums are provided by project applicants to the RDA and IDC. Finally, at this stage in the process, I want to make one thing clear. At this stage in the process, where we are today, both the RDA and the IDC have completed their parts of the application assessment and scoring processes. It is now up to the City of Madison to determine whether it wants to proceed further on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Bruce, 1876 Michigan Road, point of order. Is it the intention of the council to pass this or defeat it at this meeting? Okay.
No, sir. No voting.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Number two, Bob Canada.
My name is Bob Canada. I live at 906 Fillmore, down by the bridge. And I, I think I speak for the soul of a lot of people. I appreciate Josh, your survey, 84%. I feel like if it would be expanded, the number would go higher than that. And I think that expresses the heart and the soul of people. And our former mayor, Damon Welch, talked about being a servant leader. And Mayor Courtney, and I count you a good friend, Carl, and several of you on the council. And I speak to you on that. But I think that we have an overwhelming, overwhelming majority of people that just feel deeply wounded about giving up open space. And certainly, moving it away from Vaughn Drive would help. But giving up any open space is what everybody feels wounded by. And I would really beseech all of you. Mayor Courtney, it feels like you are just ecstatic about serving a developer from Carmel rather than the people that elected you to serve them. And I think that that goes for the whole council, is that we have an overwhelming majority of people that want to keep open space. And so I'm asking you to respond to serving the people that elected you. And I think that that's our, our huge purpose here and the soul of the people behind me. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Canada. I think it's Steve Cox. I'm sorry if I, somebody wrote over it, so I couldn't read it.
Stephen Cox. I'm at 508 Madison Street, here in Madison. And I've attended every one of these meetings about redistricting the riverfront. Listened to a lot of very good conversation and a lot of good reasons why we need to keep open space on our beautiful riverfront. I think all we have to do is go and look at some of the other riverfronts that have commercialized, like this proposal is asking us to do, and understand why we have something here that's very special. I don't know why that administration would continue to push this when overwhelmingly, this community does not want it. You know, I, I guess you have to follow the money. I hope, I'm hoping, pray I'm wrong about that. But, you know, if it looks like a skunk, if it smells like a skunk, it's probably a skunk.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
It only took 40 seconds for, for that accusation to come out. That is very rude, sir.
Mayor Courtney, we're not doing, yeah, we're not doing that. Debbie Beaman, you're next.
Debbie Beaman, 709 Walnut Street. I almost said Wally World. I'm there so much. Anyway, I don't understand where you all get all your percentages of that. It's the whole town, basically, that is against this building. I personally am not. I must be the only person in Madison who's not against it. No. Am I thrilled about it? No, I'm not. But I'm also realistic when it comes to, things are going to change, people. I've been here almost seven years, and things have changed so much since I've been here already. And things are going to change. I'd rather us be a part of that change than have somebody else come in and do it. And eventually, that'll happen. And as far as green space, my God, there is a park every two blocks. There are open fields every two blocks. There's green space everywhere in this town. That is a riverfront. Do you all, have you all been to other riverfronts? There is no green space on riverfronts. There are hotels, there are restaurants, there are all sorts of different kinds of things. That's just a fact. Go to Louisville, go to Cincinnati, go to Covington, go to Newport, Kentucky. It's, they're all built up. That's what riverfronts are. They're built up. So whether this goes through or not, I just want you all to know that you're, it's not just you all. There are other people, too, that are not hating it, that are not negative as hell, that are not insulting people and threatening people. Anybody who insults or threatens somebody else over a building needs to get checked.
Okay, next is Randy Bellamy. Let's try not to get too emotional. We want to make level-headed decisions.
My name is Randy Bellamy. I live at 409 East 3rd Street. And I am against the rezoning. Because we have a, what she just said, we have a different riverfront from Louisville and Covington and all of those places. Our riverfront is different because it's not commercialized. And you know what? I go by that river every single day, almost, and I walk my dogs, and I talk to people. And one of the things that I hear from people is they love our riverfront as it is. Now, another thing that I have to say is that I heard that there is a, people are wanting to put in parking. Well, guess what? Parking is allowed in open space. It's an allowed use. So that's not an argument, to put in parking. Why do we need to be like all the other towns? Why can't we be the one with the open riverfront, that people can see the water and see the shoreline without having to go into a building? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Sue Patterson.
Sue Patterson, 714 Walnut Street. Not my words tonight. I bring you some words from the mayor who started the beautification of the riverfront, Mark Lance Lidle. Mark and I were both elected officials at the same time. I was the Clerk at Treasurer of Hanover. He was the mayor of Madison. And we found this quote from him. "As we begin the process of beautifying our riverfront, let's all work together to make it a place for families to enjoy. It's our community's front yard. Let's keep it clean and open for generations of families to walk, sit, and play."
Thank you for sharing that. Sandy Palmer.
Sandy Palmer, 105 East 3rd. Couple things. I haven't seen the amendment, so maybe that does change things. But right now, the way it's written, I don't see how we could apply Historic Board Guidelines to any kind of construction there, because usually it's within a block and it's, you know, it's the size and scale. Well, that would be one story over flood mitigation. This is saying three stories over flood mitigation. And the setbacks, maybe we'll address some of that. And the other thing, I'm all for open space, and I think exactly what the lady mentioned. Every town, every waterway in the world has been overdeveloped. I don't want to see that happen to Madison. And thirdly, if we're going to be struggling in the next few years for financial issues, maybe this is a time, rather than putting more money into something, even though we're going to get ready funds, we're going to spend a lot as a city, that it might be better to wait. Because it's going to be years before anything comes from this. I mean, however the tax increment things work, it's not going to immediate payback. So maybe it's time to just break it a little bit, to see how it goes in the future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sandy. Jarrett Boyd.
Jarrett Boyd, 111 East 3rd Street. I've heard it said by those who are in favor of this development and rezoning of Vaughn Drive, that it's going to bring so much business and so much more income. I'm, I'm a downtown resident. I walk Main Street several times a day. And I'm familiar and friendly with many of the shopkeepers in town. The ones I know are not in favor of this. I do know one who is, and I do think his business will profit from it. But others, not so much. New restaurants on Vaughn Drive are going to take away from the restaurants we have downtown. New shops on Main Street, on Vaughn Drive, are going to take business away from downtown. I think it's time for us to pay attention and give as much encouragement to the people who are going out on a limb and opening businesses on Main Street rather than on Vaughn Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Susan, looks like an N. Nornendorf? Okay, thank you. I was close.
Would you mind spelling your last name? I'm sorry. Would you mind spelling your last name?
N-E-U-E-N-D-O-R-F. Nuenendorf.
Thank you.
1725 Bear Street. We moved here, we bought at the end of '21. We moved here in '22. We moved here because of your city, because of your wonderful riverfront. I was born in Vincennes. They're trying to revamp Vincennes, okay? I lived in Terre Haute for 40-some years. They have messed theirs up. Please, please, keep an open space for it. My friends come here and they just say, what a wonderful view you guys have. What a wonderful town you have. It's a hallmark town. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Stewart.
Hello, my name's Amy Stewart, 1812 Blackmore Street. Never really been interested in politics, to be honest. I figure you guys do your job. We do our jobs and everything, and everything should go smoothly. But this issue just hits deep. Just, I'm born and raised in Madison, go back many, many generations. Family-founded Madison, Rikers Ridge, named after my mom's side. It's very important to me. And I have a lot to say on a lot of different things, and I've had trouble getting ahold of anybody to listen. I've sent emails. I want to thank Joel Storm and Patrick Tevanoff for having the meetings. I want to thank Jim Bartlett of all. He was the one that answered my phone call. But I've sent emails, voicemail messages. So I honestly don't even know. I typed up my thoughts. Can I enter them, give them to you? How do I make sure I am heard?
We can make copies.
Is that part of the record?
I've got copies for everybody if you want.
If you give it to Councilwoman Krebs.
Yeah, you give it to me, I'll pass them out.
Okay.
You're welcome.
The one thing I want to make sure everybody keeps in mind is, you do have a lot of power. Your decision is going to affect Madison from now on, far into the future. And I told this when Joel Storm had his meeting, that when you have a lot of, you know, you need to make a decision. If you've already made your decision, it's really easy to blow off any other view to it, you know? The drinker is always going to have a reason to justify that he's going to drink. The person that cheats at something is always going to be able to justify it. If you've already made your opinion up without hearing everybody's, it's going to be easy to blow off everybody else's input. And, I don't know. It goes far back into the Bible that, you know, the iron sharpens iron. That was important and said way back then, because even back then, they knew that you have to get the input from other people. You've heard from the experts and stuff. But the people that live in Madison are the experts of Madison. You know, you can have the experts on building a building, the experts on some whatever, a growth trend, anything. But I feel like the citizens of Madison are the experts of Madison. And everybody I know, I oppose, has opposed it. I do thank Josh Schaefer for sending out the survey. I did not get it filled out. And most people I know did not get it filled out. Honestly, I didn't even know if it was legitimate, what? I didn't know the timeline on it. But I can guarantee there would have been many, many more people opposing it if we had been more aware. And I take responsibility for that. But really, just take it into consideration. And if anything, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but I believe the lady made a very good point of exactly what I'm trying to say. We're never going to be able to keep, catch up to Cincinnati, Louisville, any of those cities. Why would we want to even try to be anywhere like them? Why do we want to look at that? We need to go the other direction. We need to be, you know, the place to get away from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Judy Stasher.
Hi, my name is Judy Stasher. I live at 518 East 2nd Street in Madison. Thank you for having this meeting and for allowing us to make the comments. And I'll, I'll be brief. I think there are three main points in. I think there are three main points in addition to what other people have said. First, I think it's not a good idea to be building such a building in the floodplain. I think that's just common sense. I don't know why anybody would want to do that, I just think it's not a good idea. I think that this building is aesthetically a very bad neighbor. It doesn't look, and I've been before the HDBR many times, because we've done a lot of work on our house, we know the process, we're devoted to it. We love Madison, we want to keep it looking beautiful. And so it really hurts to see this building, this ugly, blocky, modern building, that really doesn't say, hi, I want to be part of Madison. It says, I could be anywhere and I'm going to be here. So I really have very big aesthetic issues with this building. I agree we need some more housing, and I think that there is, the mayor's done a great deal to do wonderful things for Madison. I've been watching what you've been doing for years before I moved here. I would love to see you use your persuasive power and the collective power of the city council to bring some pressure to bear on people who have properties in town that are sitting vacant, undeveloped, rotting. There's a tremendous amount of housing available, if only people would do something about it, and perhaps there's a way the city could incentivize them to do that, rather than putting this big kind of wart on the riverfront. Aesthetically, it's just, I think, a really, really bad idea. It's just not in concert at all with the look of the city. And I know we don't want to build something that looks like it was old, that's not what I'm saying, but it's a big, blocky thing, it's an anonymous-looking building. And the last point I want to make is that I think that putting such a building, a big residential building on the waterfront, is a foot in the door, and then another developer is going to come along five or 10 years from now and say, hey, I could do that too. I got a great idea for that other piece of property that's got nothing on it but grass now. That's the beginning of the end of our control of the riverfront, keeping it the beautiful thing that it is today that attracts so many people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Darrell Henderson.
Darrell Henderson, 1846 Crozier Avenue. I spent 27 years on the planning commission and 14 years on the Board of Zoning Appeals. First comment is, I am for to keep open space. That was made in 1981, and I was actually at some of those meetings. I'm not older than everybody else, I guess. But Bob's got, I'll give you a compliment, he's got this old town looking good, I'll give you that. My main thing is, we've written out the zoning board, and maybe with these additions to setbacks, that will change that. I'm hoping, I think everything being built down there, number one, should be a conditional use. Everybody's talking about the apartments, I'm worried about all the way down to St. Michael's. I mean, there's a lady that lives there. And we, with these regulations you've got now, you can build a bar five foot from her window. So we need to include the zoning board, these be conditional uses, and have the zoning board set the setbacks. And don't forget the other three blocks. It's not just about this apartment house. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Oxer.
Yes, I'm Warren Oxer. I reside in Hanover, but I also, with a partnership, we own riverfront property on Vaughn Drive, down from where this is located. And my main concerns from this at the beginning is that the normal processes of how this should have been handled have been bypassed. The, you can go back and look at the minutes of Mr. Henderson's Plan Commission in 2022, and this question was brought to them in March of that year, as far as a riverfront district. They had discussions on it at their March meeting, they reached the conclusions that should have been reached in this situation. It is a opening a can of worms. Patrick Tavonoff was on that committee at that time, he stated as such, he did in a favor buying open space at city council to be turning around and selling it to developers. There were other members there that spoke the same. Josh Wilber was on that board, he spoke as such that we need to bring a lot of people involved in this. Basically, their conclusion was that we need to gather up, have a lot of discussions in the community before we take this step. The city came back briefly in April, the next meeting, and it was dropped, decided not to pursue it any further. The next time this came up was May of this year, when it was brought to the Plan Commission. It was not initiated by the city council, it was not initiated by the Plan Commission, and we, again, we bypassed the process. We ended up, instead of creating a riverfront district first, and deciding what type of development and so forth, we ended up basically with an ordinance that was being put forth and created by primarily the mayor's office, that made this development possible to do. It made it, was geared towards it, it was written up in many ways, as far as it would have zero-foot setback on the lot lines, language put in to be able to reduce parking requirements down the road. That's already been incorporated into the next step. There were many things that the Plan Commission side had absolutely zero discussion. Normally, the desire to create a zoning district would be expressed by the city council or the Plan Commission, then it would be the responsibility of the Plan Commission to gather all that public input, put together what the ordinances actually are going to read and look like, and go forward. Instead, they were wrote up right off the start, that it's going to be a permitted use, so we'll bypass the BZAs, Mr. Henderson said. Every other zoning district in downtown Madison, apartment or condominiums, is a conditional use, which means it has to go before the BZA. It was set up in this way, so it bypassed it as such, because there was going to be problems of getting this passed to BZA. Many things were overlooked that should have came up in discussions. You know, the 45-foot isn't just because of looks, it's because of fire equipment, to being able to reach upper floors. You know, there should be considerations of things during a flood situation. Will our fire trucks, when the river's two-thirds of the way up Jefferson on that block, will they still be able to reach upper floors? How are people going to have ingress and egress? Is it just strictly going to be by boat? How are we going to handle parking? They should have to commit a contingent parking plan. How are we going to have the traffic in and out when Vaughn Drive's closed for various issues? And all these things were bypassed, didn't have the discussion. And because of the process not being handled correctly, it's made the city council's job much more difficult. You're having to consider amendments and so forth this evening that shouldn't have to be yours to consider. The Plan Commission should have done the job of preparing that. But a pressure, instead of truly looking at a zoning district, we put together a package, or there was a package put together and presented, that would allow this development to take place. And it is being driven, you know, I, the money side does drive.
Mr. Oxer, can you wrap it up? Because it's more than four minutes.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Julie Tavonoff.
Julie Tavonoff, 761 West Third Street. I agree with Warren about everything that Warren said. I've spoken about this almost at every possible get-together we've had at it. I'm not for it, for the reasons that a lot of people have said and will continue to say tonight. I do, as a former medic, I'm really concerned about the safety of the first responders, you know, if there was a fire or a flood, and you know, when there's a hurricane, people always say they're going to ride it out, and then at the last minute, you know, they're calling 911, saying, hey, I now want to come out. It's, water rescues are dangerous. I've been in a boat with a life jacket on in the pitch black night doing water rescues. It's dangerous, and it doesn't have to happen. So, you know, that's a big concern of mine. And another thing that I haven't seen anywhere being addressed is, are these going to be available for use as an Airbnb? I don't know. I think that's something we need to consider.
I'll just answer that real quickly, and the answer is no.
Okay. I just, I hadn't heard.
I'm glad you asked that question, but the answer is no.
Yes, all right, thank you.
No, we didn't want to conclude.
And one other thing is, I think all of us, maybe when you guys do vote on this, would like a little reasoning as to why you're voting yes or no. I think we kind of deserve that. You know, we've bared everything up here for you guys, and I think, you know, just a basic statement as to why you are voting for it or not voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Nathan Montoya.
Nathan Montoya, 110 East Main Street, here in Madison. I've spoken three times. I've said a lot. I prefer not to repeat myself. There's been so much conversation, I don't think that there's much need for that. Anyway, I also completed the survey, I wanted to thank Mr. Wilber for doing that. Okay, Joshua Schaefer. Sorry, excuse me. Yeah, well, we'll blame him. So, Mr. Schaefer, thank you very much for doing that. With regard to change and progress, I don't think I've heard anyone say that they felt that change was not good. I don't think I've heard anyone express fear of change here. It's, what is the change? You have good change, you have bad change. When we moved here, my wife and I moved here, one of the major factors in choosing to move here was the river and the riverfront, as it existed then, and as it existed then, that was, what, 17 years ago, I think, that we came, it was pretty much a mess, a lot of it. And we've watched that change, and that change has been wonderful. And we have walked almost every morning along the river, frequently commented on that change. At the west end, at the east end, it's just been fantastic, starting with Bicentennial Park shortly after we arrived. So it's not that we have a problem with change. We have a problem with change that we feel is wrong-minded. We lived in, before moving back to Indiana, we lived in Dallas for 17 years. Before that, we lived in New York City for a decade, and we lived in Europe for nearly a decade. And we saw a lot of rivers. In every place that we've lived, where there've been rivers, in metropolitan areas, developed areas, we've seen an urgent effort to reclaim the riverfronts from what had been industry or business or development, and their businesses there try to build, we've seen them build green space, landfill, create green space, create open space. So we'd be decades behind in that regard, marching backwards if we developed the green space, the open space that we have in that way. Why would we want to do that? Do we want to look like New Albany? Do we want to look like Louisville? Do we want these places that try to build more parks where they've taken away the potential for that with development? So we are strongly, deeply opposed to this sort of development, and strongly in favor of adhering to the comprehensive plan as it was created by the citizens of Madison, and retaining that as open space and not a place for pet spas. And I would like to actually quote from the Ready Grant application here. "The public-private partnership team believes strongly that the Hendrixlofs, then Hendrixlofs, would serve as a catalyst for additional growth and development in these districts." Exactly the problem.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you.
Rick Ruse.
Yeah, Rick Ruse, 1876 Michigan Road, I keep forgetting. I speak in favor of the underlying motion, as far as building the building, but I think it's premature, and I think the motion right now should be withdrawn, because as Mr. Henderson and Mr. Oxer said, you guys didn't go by procedure. I'm a big one on procedure. I'm the guy at the medium, a pain in the ass, that says point of order. That's my role here. But I don't think that's taken place. As far as the ladies thinking that you ought to justify the way you vote, yea or nay, no. No, that's not part of it, unless that's part of your process. As far as these amendments that came up tonight, I think it's bad form to do that, but I'm wondering, when do you take the votes on the amendments for the underlying motion?
More than likely, that would be at our first meeting in October.
Would that be considered a second reading, and you take the vote then?
Yes.
So?
And whether or not we add the amendment or not at that time. We would do the amendment first, whether we accept it or add it or whatever, and then we would vote.
And when will that be available to the public?
The amendments?
Dialogue, I'm sorry.
Are you referring to when will the amendments be available to the public?
Yeah.
I don't know that I can answer that, we just got them tonight, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I don't know that I can answer that, we just got them.
I'm not putting you on the spot, I get it.
Yeah, I know, sorry. I just don't know that I can give you an answer for that.
But I really do think that the motion should be withdrawn, because you're not ready to take the vote, you're not ready to make a considered opinion of the vote, because you didn't go the right process to get here. That's my point.
Okay.
Did I come in at four minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, three's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Tammy Hagemeier.
Hi, Tammy Hagemeier, 2612 Frank's Drive. Thanks for having us here again this evening, and for everyone that hosted us or welcomed us either through survey or another meeting, Patrick. I'm at a loss as to where to go, I've said a lot of things. Councilwoman Krebs, you talked to the group about how adamant you were that you were listening, that the council was listening. And the mayor got so upset because the citizens expressed concern that, you know, something doesn't smell right, it doesn't look right. Rick Ruse is pointing out, you know, hey, we've not followed procedure. Warren's, I think, let everybody know, and done a good job with that, of saying, things aren't the way they should be. Bob Canada's pointed out over and over again, your community, Republican and Democrats, are against this. Yes, we have a few folks that do stand up and say they're in favor of change, and that's great. Everybody does have their opinion. You know, I've seen Lucy at most of the meetings, and I appreciate that, I think that that's wonderful. She's been one of the few that has been at every meeting. But people don't feel heard. No matter what you think, they do not feel heard. We couldn't even get a reading on whatever happened at the Plan Commission, where it was an application, and then miraculously it turned into some kind of resolution after a meeting in front of the bathroom. I mean, that's not fair. That's not fair to your citizens, the lack of transparency. It's not fair to have a very decent councilwoman say, you know, let's be polite, let's be nice about it, let's not have any outbursts, let's not have any booing, and then a very nice gentleman say, you know, it kind of smells funny. He has a point. It does smell funny. I wish Kevin were still here. He stands up and says, it's, you know, the Ready Grant doesn't use any local tax dollars. Well, I doubt there's a citizen here who can tell me that on their paycheck, there's not a deduction for tax, state taxes and federal taxes. Most certainly, our local citizens are paying state taxes, and those state taxes are funneled back here. Ready Grants are local tax dollars, they just happen to be returned from the state. So that's not fair, it's not honest. And for the mayor, I appreciate that you took it personally. I understand, being accused of something that you haven't done, all right? I get that. But he had a right to say it, it does look bad. And like Mr. Ruse and so many out here, they're just saying, now, wait a minute, give us a chance, slow down, some hanky panky happened at the Plan Commission, everybody knows nothing went right, everybody knows that. There's a lawsuit that's just sitting on. There's a lawsuit that's just sitting on your doorstep. It's gonna happen. Stop it, reconsider it, back up, no more outbursts. Stop telling people they're lying or they're being mean just because they disagree with council. We're disappointed in you. We are disappointed. We are hurt. We don't feel listened to, and that's because you've not done anything different. Please, the last thing I want to ask for is that you don't allow it to be a permitted use. It should be a, a use that has to be considered by your zoning board, and I think we know why certain folks are against that. It should be conditional use.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Chapa, and I live at 321 East Street. And yes, you've seen me up here, I think, at every meeting that we've had, including the planning meetings. So, yes, I am not for it. However, yeah, and we've all said, I think, everything that you can say about this project. To me, some of the most important ones are some of the points of order, the procedures, the information. So, I know that there was a lawsuit that was filed and the meeting, this meeting was delayed so that our city attorney had an opportunity to review it. As a citizen, I was curious what, I know I'm not supposed to ask any questions, but if you put these down and answer them at some point, what's, what's the status with that? What is the status with the offer to purchase? And then, at the beginning of the meeting, Councilwoman Kreb, you were talking about "we." We were involved in these adjustments of the ordinance, we did this, we did that, and I thought, I was sitting there saying, "We?" How does a city council person be involved in those? Aren't you supposed to objectively hear it and, and respond to it, vote yes or no based on what is being presented to you? Or are all you involved in this? Can that question be answered?
Well, it's not a question to answer, but I'm just saying, we've made adjustments according to feedback.
I know, but I'm saying, why are you "we"?
I'm just speaking-
I guess, partly, I would think it's whomever-
I'm just speaking on behalf of us as a city, sorry. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, because you, I see you as "we" as part of the city council.
Absolutely.
So, when the city council is telling us, well, we've already made adjustments, I'm just kind of thinking, is that really the process of going through this, that the city council starts making adjustments to it prior, while it's being read, or technically not read, but shown?
I can have discussion with you after the meeting. Go ahead with your comments, please.
All right. Well, that, you know, I'm just really concerned with that, and, and I had wondered why the zoning board was not a part of this. Now, I kind of understand it based on what other, other comments are. So, I also agree that I think there's so many things in the mix here that it's time to, to take a break and revisit all of this with all of the concerns that the people have said. I mean, you are elected officials, you represent us, I hope you do continue to represent us, and that 84% of the folks have grave concerns about all of this. And also, with the conditional use and the no setbacks, there seems like just an awful lot that's being asked in this one resolution. Is that what it's called, a resolution or ordinance?
Ordinance.
Okay. So, that's what I'm asking is, please, just take a, because if you read the amendments at the next meeting, and you vote and say, okay, yes, we agree, and then you turn around five minutes later and vote on the whole ordinance, it just seems like there's no time for discussion from the public on those amendments. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Deanna Shelley?
Hello, Deanna Shelley, 120 Wall Street. Well, I'm assuming that you have received a lot of emails, and have you had time to read them? And then, I want to know, I'm curious about the petitions that have been filed. I haven't heard any statement on what happens. Do they just get dropped in a drawer? Or is there a procedure to follow petitions? And, let's see, this is a mess. And I just wanted to say, it's, it's my understanding that you are to represent the people. So, that was important to me. Main thing I'm asking for is just let us enjoy our lazy walks, that would be mine, or the energetic runners along the river, to enjoy children at play, enjoy the open green space, and just the laziness of our riverfront. It is special, and then I wrote, "Let us enjoy what can rarely be found, and Madison personifies it in its historic uniqueness." And we've seen this little thing happen a few times. If it's not broke, don't fix it. We love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shelley.
Hi, I'm Jan Vietrus at 701 East Second Street, and like several others, I've spoken at every council meeting and Plan Commission meeting. One of the main concerns I have with what happened this, at the beginning of the meeting about some changes and amendments, and what was my biggest disappointment at the Plan Commission meeting, could we please have, before you do any more voting or meetings or whatever, is the visuals of what you are actually going to approve? Because it is so confusing. Nothing has been, I mean, there've been things posted on the city's website, then they're changed, then something else gets posted, and it, back to the visuals, a picture is worth a thousand words, and it's just been very, very confusing for us to follow. I also wanted you to know that I've been talking to a lot of visitors over the last few weeks, and will certainly be talking to more, including a world-famous artist that did the Paducah and Maysville murals on their riverfronts. And his, his comment was, "Why would you put up walls for murals when you can look at the actual riverfront?" He was horrified that we would turn into Paducah or Maysville, or New Albany or Lawrenceburg. He said, "My gosh, your riverfront is absolutely beautiful. You don't need an artist to paint a picture of it so you, when you can't see it anymore." So, please, lots of visitors, this is why they come. The riverfront is the number-one draw from the visitor's center data. As much as we would like to believe it's the historic district, it's the waterfront, and we need to protect it. And I hope that you've also included in your thoughts what actually is going to happen to the river itself and the water. DESNA Ratcliffe submitted a very detailed piece of information on, on the hydraulics of the river that you should take into account as well, since this would allow building in the flood zone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Valicia Crisifoli, and I live at 811 West First Street, and I want to thank you for all the work that you all have put into this. We do have a beautiful riverfront, don't we? I know that all of you agree with that. And, and it is this, looking at this zoning proposal that is before us, this is not an either-or proposition. We do not have to lose a riverfront. Zoning is a way to manage change. It's not a way to keep things the same forever. And one of the things that I think is a great responsibility of the council and the Plan Commission and our zoning board is to manage the change that's happening in our wonderful community in a responsible way. I think the city has been doing that, and I applaud you for doing that, and I think the ordinance that is before us will help us manage the future and keep Madison beautiful. And if you look at this ordinance, you can, you can see growth and development along our riverfront without losing the beauty and without losing Vaughn Drive or the Riverfront Walk or anything that we all love about it. It's possible, this is not an either-or, it's possible to have both, and I think that's what we ought to be looking at, a way to responsibly manage the change for our children and the future of this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad you have those amendment, oh, Karen Skillman, 1505 Michigan Road. Glad you have the amendments. That, to me, is a sign that you're taking into consideration changes or amending or doing something better than what has been presented. When you do get to a point where you're going to have a motion on, on 2025-16, this zoning change, please have a discussion amongst yourselves, after the motion, after the second, have a discussion amongst yourselves so we can hear, before the vote, so we can hear your thoughts and opinions. So, we're not assuming we know what you mean. We're not assuming we understand, we're not guessing your, where you're coming from. Before, no matter whether your vote is a yea or a nay, it would be helpful for all of us to know your thoughts on your vote. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vince Kidd. I run Kidd Electrical in town, and my son and I, we have a couple of properties on West Street. I've been in Madison now for 34, 35 years. Adopted this town as my hometown. I came from a beautiful historic town that's no longer historical. The beautiful town I was in was Winchester, Kentucky. We had many of our historical buildings destroyed intentionally. One was by the Ellinan Railroad, of all things. They tore down our depot that we had that everyone in town wanted to keep because that was so historical. Well, my whole point, I don't, I'm not for the building on the river. I just don't think that it's a good ideal. The flooding, we can throw that out the window. We are in the longest historical, continuous historical district in the United States of America. We're number one. Not number two, not number three, we're number one. They say this will not hurt the historical district, maybe not in the way you count the historical district, but it's gonna hurt the view when you drive in from Milton, Kentucky. You're gonna have the opportunity to see a 200, and I believe it's 43 feet, of zoning that can be 45 feet high. In the wintertime, that'd cast a pretty good shadow on Madison, because our sunshine does come from the south. You're not gonna have a beautiful view of the town whenever you come up the river on one of the steamboats. So, if we throw all out our historical district, we throw out the riverfront, we throw everything out, what's the most important and valuable thing that there is in Madison, Indiana? It's right here. It's the community.
People.
It's these people that I watch. I work every day up and down Madison, multiple streets. I see people planting flowers. I see people sweeping the sidewalks. I see people picking up trash that falls accidentally on our streets. Our streets are so beautiful and so clean, and we've made great improvements. The mayor has done wonderful with the improvements. I was able to save a house in town that was deemed to be destroyed in 30 days. I haven't worked on it as fast as people would like, but I'll tell you this, I've been working my butt off on everybody else's houses and trying to keep them safe. I think that if we lose the enthusiasm of our people of this town, because we have a 243-foot wall that you can't see the town when you come in from Milton, you don't see the town when you're coming down the river from Cincinnati, all you see is new, modern buildings. And I think if we lose that enthusiasm, and the people no longer have that desire to keep this town clean, pristine, greet the people as friendly as they do, this is one of the most friendly towns I've ever been in in my life. I think that's what we would lose. I think that we need to protect the integrity of the town, and I think the self-esteem that everyone puts in to create such a beautiful town is something that we just can't ignore, and I'd hate to see that lost. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Hello, I'm Dee Comstock, 310 Marine Street, and I'm against this project that we're speaking about for all of the reasons that you've heard. I don't need to go through all of these other reasons. But two things, especially building in a flood zone. It's, after the flood we had this spring, it's pretty easy to see how high and that the river can come. It didn't come too fast this time, but sometimes it does come fast. And also, I feel like once some building, high-rise or whatever we want to call it, starts, it's the beginning of the end. Our riverfront will never be the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if there's anyone that has not had the opportunity to speak yet and did not get here in time to sign the clipboard, yes, sir, you may approach the microphone.
Hello, my name's Joe Tesoriaro. I live on 809 West First Street with my wife, Hillary Beal. We bought that property in 2005, so we've been here first part-time and then full-time for 20 years. Look, God is in the details. I don't want to see an ugly building. Things could be done for, you know, with regard to setbacks or height, but I've seen more than my share of small, little towns. I'm not comparing Madison to Cincinnati or Louisville. I'm comparing it to other small towns I've been to, some of them that are in pretty bad shape. And the number-one reason most of the small towns I've been to are in bad shape, because I ask what's going on here, and they say, "Not enough people live downtown." So, I've been to Lawrenceburg, I'm sure every, lots of people here have. Every time I've been to Lawrenceburg, I am the only person on the sidewalk in the downtown. Where are the people? They don't live there. Madison needs people that live downtown. We don't want to be Hannibal, Missouri, either. 17,000 people, their downtown is an empty shell. Why? No one lives downtown. We don't want to be Dubuque, Iowa, where I stood at an intersection in their downtown and could look four or five blocks in either direction, and I didn't see another human being, because they said, "Not enough people live downtown." The town can't be just a collection of nice buildings. We need people. And, look, times have changed. Since I've been a teenager, the population of America has almost doubled. Madison has stayed even at 12,000 people. So, you could say that's, that's good in one respect, we're not losing population, but we're, we're treading water. And let's not forget that there are still empty storefronts on Madison. We need people to thrive, and so I want people to realize that. We have to think 20 years from now. You can't say 15, 10 years from now, "Not enough people live here, we have to," by then it's too late. So, don't think just about yourselves, think about the people who are children here now. What's it gonna be like for them 25 years from now? You want a thriving town, not one where so many buildings are Airbnb's, so many buildings are part-time residents that injure- are part-time residents that in January, it's a ghost town. And by the way, in January and February, you know, there are times when I'm the only person on Main Street. So let's try to avoid that, please.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please approach the podium. Oh, point of order, yes, sorry. Come do your point of order first. Sorry.
Should it not be proper procedure for those two amendments to be moved at this meeting to amend the underlying motion?
I think at this point in time, I've not heard a motion from the council, and I think it's generally, at this point in time, they just want to have time to review them and digest them even before a motion were to be made.
Okay. That doesn't seem kosher, but I appreciate you, Joe.
Hello, my name's Derek Hughes. I live at 411 Jefferson Street. I'm a Madison local. I have two main topics I'd like to discuss. The primary one being, I am one of the tour guides for the Lanier Mansion. I've been there for, going on, five years. I am front and center on the historic society in this town, not so much involved in the running of it, so much as seeing the guests. Most people who come to, our town economy is based on tourism. People come here to see the town. Most people I've seen come here to see the town come because our town isn't like Cincinnati. We have this lovely riverfront. We have these historic buildings. None of this is modernized. They like the town the way it is. If we start gentrifying to try to match the larger cities, to try to grow, we're going to ruin the town aesthetic all our tourists are coming here for. Also, why are we building it there? There are so many places we could build. Why aren't we building it on the hilltop? I'm not in disagreement on housing. Housing is very necessary. Our town is growing. A lot of my generation's having trouble finding places to move outside of their parents' house because there's nowhere to buy. But we don't need more apartments. We need more houses, and we probably need them uptown, not ruining the historic district downtown. Now, for the second point of order. From what I can tell, these apartments that are being built right now are aimed at a higher-income demographic, 70,000 to 100,000, if I heard correctly. Well, that's not the average income of most people in this town. Also, most people in that demographic don't rent. Only 15% of people who make over 70,000 a year rent in the state of Indiana, and only 23% of people who make over 70,000 a year rent in the United States. I don't think we'll fill these apartments. I know you said that it's not allowed for Airbnbs, but I am a little worried about subleasing. I don't think that it's going to wind up the way you all think. Also, traffic on River Road during big events is already hellish. I honestly can't imagine it's going to be any better if we tack 200 residents onto River Road. It's going to get cluttered, worse so than it already is. If you want to build this, why don't we just build it somewhere else? That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Okay. I'm Julie Patterson. I live at 714 Walnut Street. I'm Sue Patterson's daughter. She spoke earlier tonight about former mayor Mark Leidl. I'm Kelly's mom. He's home with Dad tonight, but sometimes he comes to events like this because with active parents, sometimes you tag along and get a little bit of iPad time. And I'm Debbie Beeman's neighbor, and I love her, even though we disagree about a lot, and she doesn't talk to me anymore, and she's standing here right now mumbling while I'm talking, even though we're not supposed to be. That's okay, though, because a lot of you know that I lived in New Orleans for 17 years, and I consider that part of my education and part of my growing up. In New Orleans, it's different. It's the birthplace of jazz, and I don't mind a little bit of extra noise and discussion and emotion and feeling and differences of opinions because that's who we are as humans. So I don't mind that Debbie's mumbling about me behind my back. If you agree with me, you can give me a thumbs up. You can connect to me. You can give me a thumbs down. All those things are okay. What I worry about is that this all seems to be coming from a place of stress, and I worry that that stress is coming from leadership of our town. Because what I've seen through this process is everything becoming more closed off, more locked down, literally, starting with Ivy Tech being locked. I go to Ivy Tech quite a bit for events, and I've never, ever, ever experienced a locked door there, even when I went to my friend Jill's Poet Fest, and I got there after hours because, just like you guys, I'm a busy person. Just like everybody in here, we're all busy. We're all doing the best that we can, and I believe that literally of everybody. And I think what happens is, when it gets a little worrisome, is when people learn new things and they're not able to incorporate that into their growth as a person. Because I feel like we continue to grow and grow no matter what. And so I'm sorry that other people's opinions are hard to hear sometimes. I understand feeling defensive. When I grew up as an educator in New Orleans, we talked a lot about servant leadership, like Dr. Bob Canada was talking about. It's about serving the people. It's about, like, listening to the people and making sure that they feel heard, that they feel cared about, and that they're feeling validated. And I think that's what you're hearing from people who disagree, is they don't feel heard, even though now we've had opportunities to be heard. What I said on my Facebook post today, I wasn't planning to come because I am skipping a University of Indianapolis class that I have right now, and I'm going to have to go and email my professors and apologize. I don't do that a lot. I do like to be a real follower. I'm sorry I was late and didn't get signed in. I got here as quick as I could. I was helping a kitten, and that's one of the things that I do. But I know people are tired because of how long this has taken and how long it's going on. I really believe that the riverfront should be preserved for everybody, and any housing in Madison that is built new should be low-to-moderate-income housing because those are the residents that we have here without housing.
And Mrs. Patterson, can you wrap it up? It's been four minutes.
And we need to continue to share our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that's not getting? Okay. Well, can you ask me afterwards? Okay, go ahead.
It occurs to me, thank you, I'm Judy Stacer from 518 East Second Street. It occurs to me that we have a couple of amendments to the resolution, which, assuming next time if they get adopted, they would not have been part of the first reading because you haven't had a chance yourselves to read them. If that's the case, then how can this be properly called a first reading of the ordinance if it's incomplete? Because the true first reading of the complete ordinance, including the amendments, would happen at the next meeting. And perhaps that's my naivete, I don't know, but I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
So the way it works is an ordinance gets read for the first time, which this one has, and it's introduced, and then there's an opportunity for amendments to be made. And then if those amendments are made, then those are incorporated into it. There's not another first reading, but they're incorporated into it, and then there's a second reading, and then it will be voted on. They can't, so they're not considered as of right now.
We all have copies of them right now. We all have copies of them right now.
If they don't want to introduce them tonight, they don't have to. They can introduce them at the next meeting.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Ms. Detmer, go ahead. Then Mr. Cheam will be next.
Once we conclude public comments, I will summarize what I propose for the amendments. But as Mr. Jenner said, we will collaborate. I will summarize my proposed amendments after the public comment period has ended. So if we give it a few more minutes.
My name is Elise Detmer from 113 East Third Street, and let me tell you, this is the spur of the moment of me getting up here. I have a niece here saying, "Don't get up," but I am. I'm close to probably some of the oldest ones in here now. My parents moved here in 1941, before I was born. They ended up with 11 children, nine who graduated, 10 who graduated Madison High School. The oldest one was already out of school. From that, my parents had 28 grandchildren. Down, and you go on down and down, I think it's five generations. There's probably 150. Madison, whether they were born here or not, Madison is their home. I talked to my son a couple of weeks ago, and I have not been wanting to get up in front of this lately, or used to. And he read an article, and he said, "Mom, can you get something to say you support the river?" I made a phone call, and I got a sign the next day from Patrick. I'm not here to fight. I'm just here to say Madison is home to many, many, not just the Clops and the Detmers, to many, many. And the riverfront is when they come home. They used to ride their bikes, they walk, they still go. All seven grandchildren are out of college. No, there's one's in high school. When they come home, we go to the riverfront, we go downtown. They love it. I'm just here to say that for us. I oppose the building, and I'm not getting technical for reasons. It's just to keep it as it is. Thank you.
Mr. Cheam, you're up.
My name is Mark Cheam. I'm pretty much a lifer here in Madison, although I don't live in the city anymore. I live in the county. But I've remained pretty much silent on this whole thing, just trying to learn as much as I can about what we're doing. And I just don't get it. I guess that's my problem. I don't get what we're doing. We're going to build an apartment building that's out of the income level for most people. It's obtrusive in many people's opinion. It's in the floodplain. There's other places where this could be built? I just, I don't get it, I guess. And this gets built, what follows that? There's just a lot of questions, I think, as to where does this lead us to? And for those reasons, I'm opposed to this happening. I just don't think it solves any problems. If you've got 2,000 housing shortage and you're going to build 50 or 55 apartments that are out of the reach of many residents, what are we doing? I just don't get it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before we shut down the public comment?
Lisa Ferguson, 718 East Second Street. I think the most important thing that I care about is letting you all know, the man that I probably respect more than anybody outside of my family would be Dr. Canada. And we've had back-and-forth discussions many times about that. I've cried, I've talked to him. You know, he's tried to get me on that side of being against the riverfront development, and we have respectfully agreed to disagree because I love him. That has not gone on sadly in our community. We've had friends here last week that were camping. They're from Cincinnati, and they're like, "What are all those signs about? What's going on?" or whatever. And because we came from a progressive town, they think we're silly to not build something that people want to live in. When my son, who's 40, comes here, he thinks you're silly for not wanting to build something that people want to live in. Charlie and I tried to stay neutral. We're like, "We don't really care. You build the building, we're okay with it. You don't build it, we don't really care." That's how we've been. But what I have behind me is people who've been mean as hockey sticks because we've stayed neutral, and they're trying to force me into a decision, or, "Why don't you put a sign? You still don't want to..." I'm like, "I don't want to get as passionate about it as you all have." Now, my aunt told you, my family's been here since 1941. They actually have been here since 1809 because we are Lyons. So we have that lineage back to being native Madisonians. I just want to say to you all, it's okay to disagree and not call my best friend at 2:00 a.m. to call her out saying, "You're not calling me back." We have business hours. We all live by that. It's 8:00 to 4:00, generally. If somebody can't get back to you, it doesn't mean that it's okay for you to diss her. It's not okay to send an email. It's nasty. When people read stuff about Madison, they're reading what all you all are saying and doing. When you send an email to the mayor that's vicious, it doesn't stay here in this town. It's viral, okay? Everybody knows about it. It's making us look terrible. This is about a building, okay? So let's call ourselves better people, okay? That's what I want to say. I don't care if Bob Courtney builds a building or you all vote to build a building or not. I care about us being morally respectful to other people, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of watching my best friend be upset and not sleep, and you all calling them out like they don't care. Because they have a different opinion than you does not mean they do not care or they do not listen.
Okay, at this time, we're going to, Julie, please stop. Please stop. Josh Schaefer is going to summarize his amendment, and then Patrick. After that, we'll summarize his, so you guys can get an idea. This will be our first time looking at it, too.
All right. So I guess first off, just thank you to everyone who did respond to the survey I posted online and to the emails and the text messages and phone calls. As Carla made it clear, they have been coming very quickly and often. I have, I'm not able to respond. I simply do not have enough time in the day to respond to everyone's emails or phone calls and text messages. But I am listening. I am reading those, looking at the Facebook posts or the survey responses. I really did appreciate everyone who took the time to respond to the survey, all the comments that were made, both in favor and against. There were many good arguments laid out on both sides. There are many bad arguments laid out as well. It's just the truth of the matter. Thankfully, most people were very respectful, as most of you have been tonight, and really appreciate that. There were some people that left some very vulgar and rude comments. Unfortunately, that's also a sad fact of life. Some people can't be adults, as we've seen many times throughout this process and others. But we are listening, and hopefully some of these amendments may make that, or proposed amendments, rather, would make that clear. This may not make everybody happy, but at least it might get a little closer to what we can all agree on. And I can say before this even, these are read, or before we attempt to amend the ordinance, I don't know how this council's going to vote. I don't even know how I'm going to vote when this comes up to the final reading. So I hope you all will continue giving us your feedback, and we will continue to listen. So for the proposed amendments, the biggest thing, I think, is probably related to setbacks. It's been brought up several times. Zero-foot setbacks is what was written into the initial ordinance. And so my proposal will be that there is a five-foot setback to any property line with 10-foot to a property line adjacent to the street. And for any portion of the structure, of any proposed structure, not just this apartment complex, it's rezoning for the entire district, any structure exceeding 15 feet above ground level, there will be an additional 10 feet for those adjacent to the street. So that would give you 20 feet if the side of the building is next to Vaughn Drive or 15 feet to a side street. There's some language just clarifying that all the floodplain regulations apply and that there shouldn't be any occupied spaces below flood grade. Hopefully, that would be obvious, but we'll make sure that's clearly codified and that any residential area uses will have parking for at least one space per unit. And then additionally, changed a few- And then additionally, changed a few of the uses to conditional use, but that in my version of the proposed amendments does not include the apartments or hotel uses. So I think that's everything. I summarized a few typos as well, but those aren't important.
All right, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We've been talking about this as a community for a very long time, and I think it's, it's been, it's been a good discussion for the most part. And I've spoken with hundreds of people about this. I still owe a lot of people emails and phone calls back as well. And I try to stay on top of that, but the one thing that I've taken away from, from all of these conversations is that the people of Madison are not against development or growth. And in this case, they're against this type of development in this location. It's, it's the location, it's not the project. We could, we could move an apartment project like this to almost any other location in Madison, and I don't think many people would bat an eye at it. In fact, I think it would be a good addition to our city in another location. We're not landlocked. There are other sites available for high-end affordable, and affordable housing alike. So I don't believe it's fair for us to ask Madison to give away our riverfront, to wall off our community's front yard for the benefit of a few. And I'd like to ask my fellow council members to, to listen to what everybody's said here tonight, and I believe they will. That being said, I believe there's still some good that can come from reworking portions of this zoning ordinance. There's excellent buildings, excellent buildings and some open lots within this three-block area that could benefit from the riverfront district. And I would like to offer some amendments that would help to alleviate some of the concerns that I've heard. And they address concerns that I've heard from residents on both sides of the issue, folks in favor and folks against it. And it may make certain projects more difficult to build, but it would by no means preclude development. And it would give property owners down there a lot of new flexibility to repair existing structures and construct new ones while still maintaining zoning protections for their neighbors that are, that are really valuable there. And as Mr. Henderson did say, don't forget, this is about more than one building. It's about three blocks. So the amendments that I, I would like to propose, in many cases similar to what Councilman Schaefer is proposing, I would move that for general restrictions in the district. Side yard and rear yard setbacks would be a minimum of three foot. A front yard setback would be not less than 10 feet from the right of way. The height restriction would be 35 feet inclusive of flood protection grade on the parcel. And I would add a few other sections to the general restrictions. One would be, and I should also add, 95% of what is in here has been taken from other sections of our zoning ordinance, mostly from where apartments and similar type structures are allowed within historic district residential. The only thing I added was regarding replacement of, placement of dumpsters and trash collection facilities to keep them away from other residences. But, so I would add a section that number eight would be visibility at intersections. On a corner lot, nothing shall be erected, placed, planted, or allowed to grow in such a manner as to materially impede vision between certain points and measurements. I would have another section that would say, all uses shall have a parking and occupancy, contingency, and evacuation plan for flood events approved by the Plan Commission prior to the start of construction. And then I would also have a section that would state that all uses permitted in the official schedule of uses for this district shall be considered a conditional use, which would then remove the section of restrictions for permitted uses. And moving on to restrictions for conditional uses, under general restrictions for conditional uses under parking areas, I would add that no parking area shall be located within 15 feet of surrounding dwelling units. And then for the different uses, most of the different uses that are being proposed on this, the schedule for this district, some separate regulations for those. So for the apartment and condominium conditional use, I would add these other specific requirements. For all apartments adjacent to dwelling structures, side and backyards must be 20 feet. Necessary lighting should not adversely affect any adjacent property, and such devices should be approved by the Plan Commission prior to installation. No central trash collection points or dumpsters shall be placed within 20 feet of adjacent structures. The structure should be designed and landscaped so as not to destroy the continuity of the district. Plans would require Board of Zoning Appeals approval prior to construction. And no unsafe, uncomfortable, or offensive vibrations, noises, visual effects, odors, or air pollutants shall be allowed to radiate across lot lines. And the other, the other conditional uses as well have similar, similar restrictions. So some of the other uses that are on there, manufacturing for a brew pub, manufacturing of glass and glassware, manufacturing of pottery and related products, retail hotels, tourist courts, tourist homes, residential hotel, motels, and other transient housing, retail eating places, retail drinking places, nursery, primary, and secondary education uses. For those, no structure shall be placed within 20 feet of surrounding dwelling units. Lighting, lighted areas shall be approved prior to development and shall be placed in such a way that they do not infringe upon the rights of adjacent property owners. Is recommended that no light standard be placed closer than 50 feet from any adjacent property line. No central trash collection points or dumpsters within 20 feet of adjacent structures. And structures should be designed and landscaped so as not to destroy continuity of the district and require BZA approval prior to construction. And then the proviso about no unsafe, uncomfortable, or offensive vibrations, noises, et cetera. And then for parks, playgrounds, and recreating areas uses, and there's a number of those that are proposed for this district, no structure shall be placed within 20 feet of surrounding dwelling units and lighted areas shall be approved prior to development as well, to try to protect the surrounding uses, but also still provide some flexibility and use to this area. And I think, seeing Councilman Schaefer's for the first time tonight, and I know I just got mine to the council and mayor as well, I would ask that a select committee be appointed this evening pursuant to our ordinances, specifically to look at these amendments and what we're talking about tonight prior to our next meeting and report back to council on, on what they've discussed on those. I think that would be helpful, and those meetings would also be open to the public. Thank you.
Just like to give a remark before. Yep. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight and all your remarks. This, we've had a meeting every month since May. The Riverfront District proposal came out of a complete review of our entire zoning ordinance and our subdivision standards. It's been going on for about 10 months with, with the steering committee that included members of our BZA as well as Plan Commission and mayor staff. You can look all across our city and see the impact that good investments have made to our city as well as our quality of life. And I appreciate the amendments that are being proposed tonight because we're trying to get this right. This would actually be, I think, the third or fourth amendment to the proposal since it was introduced back in, back in May because of public input and talking and listening to hundreds of people over the course of those five months to try to get it right. I appreciate the amendments because it acknowledges the fact that we need a plan. We don't currently have a plan for that area of our riverfront, and it is suffering. Like other parts of our community, it is suffering from disinvestment. And we believe that we can prudently bring investment to that riverfront. As it was stated earlier, I think very well, both can coexist, the enjoyment of our riverfront as well as development on our, prudent development on our riverfront. We have followed processes as defined by law. It's been an open process. And I'm looking forward to digging into the amendments. I agree with Councilman Tevenall. I will appoint a select committee of council members to review the proposed amendments. We'll make the amendments public tomorrow. And we'll continue with this process as we head into the October 7th meeting. And I'll end with this, and that is about location. It is about location. Downtown Madison is a very desirable location. And contrary to what's been said here tonight, you can't do this just anywhere. But I will say that anywhere we go, because it's been true with every development we've done in the last five years, there's always been conflict. Nobody wants the encroachment around them. And I get it, you're being disturbed. We're changing the environment around you. We have to take those changes very seriously. But location is extremely important, and downtown Madison needs a boost for its economy as well as the businesses here. We want them to thrive 365 days a year, not just when tourists are in town. But location is really important, and that is a location that we feel is important to the city of Madison, to downtown, to our local economy, and is extremely desirable. We're all here talking about our enormous quality of life. That doesn't happen by accident. It can be reversed very quickly. I think that, I do appreciate all the, all the comments. So we're going to continue to work hard to get this right, and we'll, we'll evaluate the amendments, and we'll continue to have good dialogue and collaboration. And I can say this with all my heart, this council and myself, we are listening. And nobody is ignoring remarks. We may agree, and we may agree to disagree. But, but this council is really working hard to get it right, as well as we are and my staff. But a good outcome is dependent upon a good plan. And I believe we are closing in on a good plan, and it is a better plan because of remarks here over the, and over the course of the last five months.
Mr. Jenner, can you read our resolution 2025?
Carla, before you do that.
Oh, sorry.
One comment I forgot to include earlier, and just, and just back to the survey, like I said, I appreciate everybody who responded. I know that many people have seen the presentation that I sent out summarizing the results. For those who didn't see the actual presentation, please be aware that there's a second page to that, or the first true page after the title was a disclaimer. That survey is not a poll. It is not a statistical poll of a random cross-section of the community. It is a survey based on self-motivation. The people who are interested in this project for or against are the ones who are going to be, who responded to that poll and who gave me their comments. Obviously, not everybody had a chance to, to get the link and to respond in time, but do not, please do not represent the results of that, that survey as though they are a poll that represents the entire population. We do not know one way or the other, whether it's 90-10 for, or against, for this project or for the rezoning, or if it's 50-50 or somewhere in between. This is, please remember that, I guess, is, it is not, not a scientific poll and should not ever be represented as such.
Okay, so we have a resolution. Well, are we, we have a resolution that's 2025-13C that we need to take care of before we close.
Carla?
Yes.
If I may, and this is to process.
And you want to go ahead and go to that resolution?
Do we need a motion to refer these amendments to a special committee? To keep it clean?
They've not been proposed yet.
No, they've not been proposed at this point in time. I think what you've had is you've had two council members.
I'm talking to Mike Joe, I'm sorry.
I think what you've had is you've had two council members who have kind of presented some thoughts that they would like to see incorporated into the ordinance. And I think what Councilman Tevenall is requesting is that a special committee be appointed to take a look at those issues that they're bringing up, maybe even some others, to maybe see if you can't hone in on maybe either a one amendment that might work, or it still could be multiple, but just to see if there might be a little better way to, to get honed in on some of the issues that they're bringing up. So, no.
We do have one other item for business tonight, and I'll turn it over to Joe for resolution 2025-13C.
That is, if I can find it. Resolution number 2025-13C, and it is the MPD cellphone stipend fund transfer.
Major Munt and Dr. Finance, Mindy McGee's here.
Good evening, council. This is a simple transfer. You might remember that the police switched from using their personal cellphones to the Verizon program. And I'll let Major Munt explain why they now want to flip that back, but the fund part of this is coming from a telephone fund and county tax. We're just going to put it back in for the stipends for the officers because they'll be using their own personal cellphones.
Yeah, like Mindy said, we're reverted back to our own personal cellphones. The main reason for going to the Verizon phones were to be able to use the hotspots, those phones provided to run our computer system, which needs obviously wireless internet. After getting them, even though they assured us they would work, after getting them, they really didn't. So a lot of the guys have been using the jetpacks that we had previously used to begin with. So we just decided we'd probably try to get rid of the Verizon phones, go back the way it was.
I move we approve resolution 2025-13C.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Comments or questions? Take a roll call. Vote, please. Tevenall?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Satillo?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Wilbur?
Yes.
Storm?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Council, are there any reports, recommendations, or other business from standing or select committees? Are you none? Is there any public comment with regard to other topics that we'd like to?
I thought I was signing up this evening for the public comments. Decided things, I was told that you didn't need to sign up for an agenda item as such, but so, all right, correct, all right. What I wanted to address this evening and be sure the council was aware, there'd been some conversation earlier by Mr. Kellums on the ready grant proposal. I think the ready grant is a lot is what's driving this particular project, and I had the opportunity to become very familiar with that process over the last couple of months. And one thing that really has jumped out to me as a concern is the original project that the city of Madison submitted for this ready grant was a totally unfinancially feasible project. And that may be the reason that initially scored high. And I just think that the council needs aware of this. There was a project submitted for $35 million with a developer putting in 30 million and 5 million in public funds, 2 million in ready funds that would be part of those public funds. And that is a project that was scored by Ready. They have made no other end of it to score the additional project. It was quite a bit similar. So it's been very concerning that you can produce or enter a totally financially unfeasible project and it score high. Now, Ready, if they'd been on their toes, should have caught that. To give you an example, how unreasonable, it was for 65 apartments with an average rent of $1,000. That would generate 65,000 a month, maximum, if that's such. Could be more if they raised the rents more than the average of 1,000 or so forth. The debt service on 30 million at a 3% interest rate on a 20-year basis is somewhere in the neighborhood of 165,000 or 175,000 a month. So the project just absolutely could not have worked. Then somewhere shortly after the project was awarded, based on those bases, Madison submitted a Menden grant application. And then all at once, the project was down to 12.7 million. Instead of 65 units, it was 53. And this was all done before any of the height changes took place. This was done back in July and August of last year, in 2024. So I don't understand this, if, if the people that are submitting that grant application are, I was asked, I think that was the intent? And I said, well, I don't know. I don't know if they were that incompetent that they submitted a totally financially unfeasible project, or if they truly did so so it would score high. And if they've done that, it does not reflect well on Madison. Playing those type of games doesn't work well. As you know, there were a lot of other applicants. Those applicants would not be very happy to realize that they got a grant, but it's not going to be at all what they built or what they submitted it on. And I can understand it ready, it would have looked good, 2 million, 35 million. Doesn't score quite as high when you're looking at 2 million and 12.7 million. So there is many, many things. So, there is many, many things in this whole process that's been driving these apartment buildings forward that really needs to have a hard look by council as a whole. Thank you.
Let me just make a remark on that, and that is, all the processes and procedures for the Ready Grants since 2021 have been followed. It's an iterative process. If you looked at the hundreds of applications that were filed across the five counties, many of them scored in the ranking, and then as they moved along further in the true development and the recommendations to the state, they changed. They're still changing. There's still, there's Ready One grants that were issued, that were awarded in 2021, 2022 that can't be done in timely enough, so now they're being swapped with 20, they're being swapped with Ready 2.0 grants. The process at the RDA has been followed, as Kellums, our representative on the RDA, explained the process. The local RDA, the regional RDA scored them. They made recommendations to the state. The state had their own key initiatives that they scored them against with a third-party consultant. They recommended them back to the RDA, and then have issued then preliminary commitment letters. There's still more to do. This is just the beginning of a really long process, but it's an iterative process. The same thing with the building design, candidly, is a very iterative process. Everybody wanted to see what's going there, and I think that's fair, but it's still very iterative. It is about getting the guardrails and the district established, and then continuing to work with our partners, both at the state level for grant sources and private investment, to find what works there, and that is also compatible within the regulations of the district. The most important thing is we have a plan for the district, and then we can do things prudently and responsibly for the district. Right now, we have no plan. We're going to have a better outcome. But all the processes on the RDA, they can all be second-guessed and judged. Fine, take it up with the RDA, take it up with the IEDC. We followed every process. It's been a very open, transparent, public process, but there's still a tremendous amount of work to do in that regard. Wrapping it up here, I hope everybody enjoys Chautauqua this weekend. I'll leave it with that. Thank you for all your patience on Main Street Construction. It's going to be beautiful when we're done. Please welcome all of our tourists and visitors and everybody in Jefferson County and surrounding area to our community this weekend, and make sure that it shines like it always does. A lot of hard work has gone into all of our festivals and events, and it couldn't happen without phenomenal tourism partners and volunteers. Our next meeting will be October the 7th. Council, have a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second motion.
Any discussion? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any polls? Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Our students left us.